Item F, provide an update on the impact of the governor's proposed state budget and approve a letter to governor and legislature opposing, eliminating redevelopment agencies. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as the finance director has indicated, the primary threat to local agency funding resulting or anticipated in the near term, next year, from the governor's budget is the potential loss of redevelopment, not just a loss of redevelopment resources that would become payable to the state, as has occurred over the last two years, but the entire elimination of redevelopment from the work program of redevelopment agencies up and down the state. This is not the only potential impact of the governor's proposed budget, but it is by far the most significant, and I'll spend most of my comments on that particular threat, but would highlight for you a couple of other features of the governor's budget, the governor's proposed budget, that have the potential of impact to the city of San Bruno and its next year and potential future year budgets. The first is the governor's proposal to, let me back off and describe the governor's proposed budget as one that redefines the way that many services are delivered, and particularly services that are either funded or directly provided by the state of California. In an effort to resolve continuing and increasing deficit issues at the state, this is a more massive reconstruction of service delivery than has been implemented in prior year state budgets, but, and has the potential to affect the city on many different levels. Some of them, at this point, are not yet able to be predicted. A couple that are is the governor's proposal to shift down to local governments, the incarceration of offenders with a commensurate or a corresponding shift in revenues for the services provided, primarily by county jails. The big problem is, in that proposal, is that county jails in many areas of our state are already operating at capacity, and the funding that's proposed to be shifted by the state to the local government, to the county in this case, is not sufficient to cover the costs associated with those services. So counties are predicting a difficulty in being able to house offenders, and the potential for release of low-risk offenders and juveniles back onto the streets with a uncalculatable, at least at this point, potential effect to local law enforcement agencies who are dealing with offenders who might otherwise be incarcerated but are back out on the streets because they can't be housed. In addition to that, there is the unanswered question remaining in the governor's budget about the continuation of the vehicle license fee structure that is currently in place and which is subject to consideration by the legislature and potentially by voters. Vehicle license fees are currently being used by counties, in particular by San Mateo County, to offset the cost of booking fees that would otherwise be charged and were previously charged to local cities. In the case of San Bruno, there's approximately $100,000 in booking fees that are currently being covered by vehicle license fees that are going to the county. Should that be discontinued, then it is likely that the city would be saddled with that cost, and I'll say new cost, that is not currently being calculated into our budget. So there are two potential effects in the law enforcement or the criminal justice area. A second and more minor impact is, and I would say highly likely to be, impacting local library services up and down the state. Currently, the state funds a couple of programs, including the library facilities program and the interlibrary loan program, which, through which, the city receives approximately $25,000 a year. In prior years, those funds were deposited to the city's own internal fund that was building up a balance with the hopeful anticipation of being able to deploy those funds as seed money to the construction of a new city library. In more recent years, beginning in 2005, 2006, a portion of those funds and the receipts accrued annually through the state to the tune of approximately $75,000 have been put into the general fund to offset the cost of operating the library, even at the very reduced levels that it is currently operating. The amount, current balance, in the library fund is approximately $550,000, so it does retain a credible balance, but the governor's proposal would eliminate any future opportunity to add to that fund or to rely, have some small amount of funds at least, to rely on to offset legitimate operating costs in the, in the delivery of library services. At this point, I would say that, as I'm highlighting the direct impacts to local city governments, we must be mindful of the fact that the, many of the cuts or changes, redistribution of service delivery and resources that is anticipated in the governor's budget, would be visited directly on the delivery of services through county governments. And, as I'm sure the city council is aware, the, and I'm not directly discussing those tonight because they do not impact direct financial relationships between the city and the state of California. We do need to be mindful of the fact, though, that the relationship between program delivery and funding is different between counties and cities, I'm sorry, between counties and the state and between cities and the state, and specifically, counties tend to be more heavily engaged in the human service delivery area and receive a higher percentage generally of their funds directly through, through the state. What that means for us, and it does mean something very serious to us, and that is that the county will likely be unable to continue delivering at the level that it has historically with the limited amount of state funds that it receives being cut back, it is likely that human services and health services that are currently delivered by the county, by this county and others up and down the state, will either no longer be delivered or will be ways, it may need to be discussed, to shift those services to local cities if they're going to be continued at all. That's a, an effect that I think we are currently unable to quantify, but we've seen before and could potentially anticipate again, should the state be successful in approving a budget that once again seeks to place the lion's share of the financial responsibility on takeaways from local cities, from local governments. The most serious component, or the most immediately concerning component of the governor's proposed budget, is his proposal to do away with redevelopment as a function of local government. As the city council is aware, redevelopment is intended to produce economic, tangible economic development results, and specifically, and in most cases, those that would not otherwise be able to be created by the private sector or by the limited resources of municipal and other local agency general funds. So redevelopment was implemented many years ago with the intent of providing a dedicated funding source, and that source is growth in property tax revenues that goes to local redevelopment agencies instead of being distributed among all of the various taxing entities within the community. There is a very healthy provision within redevelopment law and to which the redevelopment agency of the city of San Bruno does adhere, and that is for pass-through of, in our case, approximately 50% of all tax increment revenues received by our agency are actually passed back through to taxing entities, schools, mosquito abatement district, the city itself, along with a variety of many others. So it is not entirely accurate to say that all revenues that go to the city, go to a redevelopment agency represent a direct take from other taxing entities, and in particular, the concern, I would say, most generally is around school district funding. With that said, the proposal then is to completely eliminate redevelopment agencies. It is unclear at this time exactly how that would occur. There are numbers of legal and other issues that are pending resolution, and so it is very early to speculate about precisely how that would happen and precisely what the impact to the San Bruno redevelopment agency would be. In very general terms, as the city council is aware, our redevelopment agency is relatively young in the, in terms of comparison to the implementation of, or the opportunity of the establishment of redevelopment statewide, and has only since approximately 2007 begun to generate tax increment revenues that are in excess of the day-to-day operating costs of the agency. The council is also aware that the agency has incurred debt that currently resides at the level of approximately $3 million to the equipment reserve as startup costs that were incurred in the early days of the formation of the agency prior to it generating really any tax increment revenues at all. More to the point, the agency has, I would say, ambitious, or at least moderately ambitious plans for, that are, that are now within sight, and we are on the cusp of being able to make a tangible difference beyond that, which has already been implemented in the city of San Bruno, with the realization of the vision that's captured in our transit corridors plan. And I know the city council is aware and has been anxious to take advantage of the promise, if you will, that redevelopment provides and the vision that is articulated in the, in the strategic plan that is nearing final completion. Again, I can't articulate with any real certainty at this point precisely how redevelopment in our state would be dismantled, but there is consideration in the proposal that the governor's office has made, that existing obligations of redevelopment agencies would be secured with the continuation of some form of tax increment revenues, and that by doing so, by limiting the continued flow of tax increment to redevelopment agencies or their successor agency, organizations that would be in place simply to secure the payoff of agency obligations and debt. There is indication that those types of obligations, which our agency has actually incurred very little of, would continue to be satisfied. There was an initial, as this news rolled out of the governor's office, there was initial scramble to consider whether agencies could issue debt to essentially encumber amounts of tax increment that might be anticipated over the life of a redevelopment agency, and the city council has considered such a technique in current, in previous strategic planning sessions and consideration of our redevelopment implementation planning processes. The very next thing that began to be discussed was the state enacting urgency legislation to prevent that from happening. For urgency legislation to be implemented, that would, in essence, retroactively eliminate any new debt incurred from the provisions of the governor's proposal. So, that, that option came to be considered as a, as a less viable way to protect redevelopment resources. However, in the very recent days, increasingly it appears as if that strategy by the state may not be successful, and if not, we might be well advised to consider whether we could put our future agency tax increment under some sort of debt obligation in order to possibly protect it. So although that strategy does not appear in the list that I'm going to discuss with you from the staff report, I will add it as an item that I think needs to be considered over the, over the next days as, as part of an overall strategy to address the potential devastating consequences to the city of San Bruno, should this governor's proposal be ultimately successful. Much more simply, the item that's in front of you tonight is to consider the sending of a letter to the governor's office that would articulate not only the tangible improvements that have been part of the redevelopment agency work program in the city of San Bruno over the past few years, but also to articulate the harm that would be the result of the proposal being implemented, particularly in our city. That letter is in front of you tonight, and we're looking for your concurrence that that be sent. And I would add that in addition to the sending of a letter, that the council consider directing staff to make sure that we stay current with initiatives being forwarded through the League of California Cities and the California Redevelopment Association as they emerge and as requests for action are being made, for example, to call legislators, to call the governor's office, or typical types of requests that we might receive, that you give us the authority that this is an issue that has your attention, that you're concerned about, and that you authorize us to undertake on your behalf over the next days and weeks as this effort continues in the early part of the governor's budget consideration. In addition to considering bonding as a strategic attempt to address the protection of both current tax increments in hand, as well as those that would otherwise be received over time, staff is, is proposing that we look at the documentation that exists on agency obligations outstanding. For example, we do have the issuance of certificates of participation that occurred in 2002 to construct the police facility, I'm sorry, I believe it was in 2002, to construct the police facility. Redevelopment tax increments are pledged by a agreement between the city and the agency to cover the debt service on the COPs that were issued by the city. We think it's urgent and critical that we, we take a look at that fairly simple agency-city agreement and make sure that it can withstand the scrutiny of a attempt to only pay tax increment where the, it is secured by a legitimate debt or other type of agency obligation. Thirdly, we recommend that you direct us to look at any another, any and all other ways that we might secure a, a city and agency relationship with respect, for example, to the outstanding debt. As I mentioned before, we have $3 million of agency debt to the general fund equipment reserve, either strengthening that agreement in order, again, that it could withstand the elimination of redevelopment via the governor's proposed budget, and/or that we simply consider repaying it, so that those funds go out of the agency, are no longer subject to being eliminated. Two additional items that we look at, the relationship that we have with the redevelopment agency relative to the ownership of real, real property assets. The agency does own one piece of property in our downtown. It's not, I don't know exactly what the governor's proposal would, you know, how that, how that asset would be disposed with the, with the budget proposal, but I think it's safe to say we don't want it to go out of our hands, and it, if transferring it to the city in some manner would protect it. Again, I think that's something that you ought to consider directing us to take a hard look at. And then lastly, as the city council is aware, we have obligations through our housing set-aside that is one feature of redevelopment activity. We have a very substantial annual ongoing obligation to the affordable housing units that have been produced at the Crossing project. We need to look at that and make sure that agreement, again, withstands the test of the potential elimination of, of redevelopment. But beyond that, the way the governor's proposal is currently structured, housing increment would revert to the housing, the local housing authority. In other words, the feature of redevelopment activity that goes to the provision of affordable housing would continue, but it would be undertaken not by redevelopment agencies, but by local housing authorities. As you know, the city of San Bruno does not have a local housing authority, and in our case, that jurisdiction is with the county housing authority. So the question would be, are we, are we comfortable with San Bruno increment, housing increment going to the county housing authority? What exactly would that mean to the ability to produce affordable housing in our community? And how might we go about, would it be worthwhile going about establishing a housing authority here in San Bruno, again, to protect the housing redevelopment increment? That's a snapshot of the various strategies that the persons very closely involved in redevelopment are recommending. We are recommending tonight that you give us direction to take a hard look at these and any other strategies that might present themselves over the, over the next days and weeks, and that you ask us to report back to you at your next council meeting on the status of these various strategies and any potential immediate action items. With that, I will stop and ask you to let me know if you have any questions.
Through the chair. There you go. Thank you. I think you were very detailed, and what it's getting down to with redevelopment, which is a concern, it seems that, my understanding is contractual obligations that we may have, i.e. the police plaza, the equipment reserve, the housing, are things that we may be able to hold on to because it's under that umbrella. Now, it's not a guarantee, but it's the way it looks like it could be going at this point. But however, we've talked about other ideas, thoughts, concepts at Huntington and San Bruno Avenue. Obviously, that would not protect any future endeavors that we would have. So I would like, when we come back, to figure out what we can do quickly, if need be. It may not be the, you know, ideal situation, and may not be seen that the state would like this, but, you know, they've already received, taken, 1.99 million from redevelopment already. And now, and I understand it's tough in Sacramento, but it's tough here, too. And so with those monies that we have, we ought to do whatever we can within the parameter, and if that means contractual obligations, so that it protects it, or however it's written, you brought up the Wells Fargo site, which I hadn't thought of that, then I think we need to look to those quickly, efficiently, and effectively, bring those back, and let's see what we can do, because we don't have a lot of time.
On the other side of the coin, we need to fight. We need to fight along with the League of Cities and all the other cities through the state and say, no way. No way. I mean, this is 10 years, and we've, we've worked so hard for the last 10, 11 years to implement redevelopment, and we have a lot to show for it, and we have big plans. We're not going to start over again. I mean, what's going to happen? You know, their, their idea is to lower the threshold for bond measures to 55%? Yeah, I'm sure the public's going to really, you know, jump on that. So I think we have to equally fight to, you know, to, to tell, get, get the message into this new governor's head that it's, it's wrong. It's wrong for the local communities.
I'm sorry, real quick. On this letter that you've just shown us tonight for Governor Brown, would it be possible, one with council things, to CC also Lee Lanier and Jerry Hill, so that they're aware clearly of our opposition?
Very good idea, absolutely.
I'm sure they already hear it, but I want it to be reaffirmed to them where we stand, since they're up in Sacramento dealing with this.
Any comments? So does that mean we get to send the letter? Would someone like to make a motion?
First, the mayor, hopefully.
I move we send the letter.
Second.
Motion, second on the floor, to send the letter to the governor with CCs to our state senator and assembly person. All in favor?
Aye.
Send the letter.
Thank you.
Good, and keep us posted on all of the different recommendations that could possibly come up. Appreciate that.
Through the chair. I'm just curious, how are we finding out about the latest developments from Sacramento? And are we getting timely alerts from any particular place?
Yes, we are. Both the League of California Cities and the California Redevelopment Association are on this very heavily, and we're receiving daily or every other daily messages about actions that are being taken, calls to action, or information that's coming down from Sacramento.
Okay. Is there any advantage, or would it be a good idea for us to direct you now, pass, pass a motion to say, under the signature of the mayor, any needed letters that need to go out in between council meetings, should and would go out?
Absolutely, and you don't necessarily, if that's a concurrence of the city council, we have done that in the past at the mayor's authority. I think identifying that you are all behind that and that that kind of information can be included in a letter, I think is, is important. The other thing that, from time to time comes up, is there'll be press conferences scheduled in a very quick manner sometimes, or rallies, or other types of initiatives to have groups of city council persons go talk to legislators. Those are the types of strategies that are often initiated in this type of circumstance. And I know the League and And I know the league and the CRA would be very well appreciative of any and all city council members actually engaging personally in those types of initiatives, because it can go on, it gets, you know, it's wearing. We've been at this for a really long time, and, not this particular one, but this series of threats to the stability of local revenues. So I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to keep you informed about that and call on you as may be necessary from time to time.
Okay.
Need any action on that? Almost lost Ken.
That would not...
Do we have money for a new chair?
No.
Do we need an action on that, Connie, or just a direction?
Either way, it's fine.
Well, I move that we, as a council, support and any action that the mayor needs to take and the city manager needs to take in between city council meetings to support the defense of our redevelopment agency.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor on a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair.
Michael.
One more question. When we spoke previously regarding this topic, you mentioned also that there is a portion of the redevelopment money that goes back to the general fund to help subsidize some portion of activities that take place in community development. And I'm wondering, when we go to plan out our next budget, are we, or would you suggest that we not include a contribution from redevelopment in that budget?
Well, as I believe the finance director discussed as part of the audit presentation, is that one of the big threats to next year's budget is this, and the primary reason is not because, or the threats to the general fund. I mean, this threat has many different facets to it. The elimination of redevelopment and the ability to build, you know, do what redevelopment was intended to do is a huge threat to the future of San Bruno. A more immediate threat is the fact that there is approximately $1 million of annual redevelopment tax increment that is funding day-to-day operations of the redevelopment agency that are delivered through a portion of the time for a large number of city staff persons. There are also some positions in the city service that are funded exclusively by redevelopment funds, and so how to address that significant threat to our general fund operating budget needs to be a serious consideration of the upcoming workshop and then the development of the budget as we move through the next several months, during which time also this picture is going to clear substantially as to how exactly this will happen and what precisely it means for revenues to the city of San Bruno. I think the governor might argue that, well, you're going to be, you're going to receive additional revenue because tax increment is not going to take away, as it does currently, from taxes that would otherwise be received by taxing entities. And I should have mentioned this earlier, the city of San Bruno is a relatively low property tax city, and as you probably know, Proposition 13 distributed property taxes in a different way among taxing entities, among different cities. So some cities might receive, some cities receive no property tax. Some cities receive 5% of the property tax that's collected in their community. Some receive as much as 25% or 26% of the property tax collected in their city. All of that is based on formulas that were set in cement with the passage of Proposition 13 many years ago. The city of San Bruno receives roughly 12% to 13% of the property tax dollar that is collected in the city of San Bruno. So it's a relatively small offset, if you will, to the amount of tax increment that the agency would receive. So there'll be some effect to the general fund, a big negative effect, a potentially small positive effect. We have to do the analysis and figure that out, and then march through this process to see how it all works out as part of our, as one among several big issues affecting our 1112 general fund operating budget.
If, Ms. Mayor, this is not a done deal. This is coming before the voters in June. This budget proposal, for him to eliminate, for the governor to eliminate redevelopment and to make all these shifts to the county, these are still going to be coming to the voters, isn't it?
Well, the budget is approved by the state legislature, and it's not done by the voters. There are some questions about, from a legal perspective, about whether the legislature and the governor have the authority to eliminate redevelopment, which has some status in the state constitution. But it is, the budget itself and the proposal to eliminate redevelopment is not currently scheduled to come before the voters.
What is coming to the voters in June?
It may need to. The thing that may appear before the voters is a continuation of the vehicle license fee. That's the one thing I'm aware of, that it may be on the ballot in, I think, in June.
So we're finding out that Prop 22 has some loopholes.
I'm not prepared to say that because I'd like to believe that, you know, there's a more challenging uphill battle for the governor to get this budget through, given the security of Proposition 22.
It just seems that the irony of it all is that the governor and the state legal staff are looking at ways to circumvent Prop 22.
Yes.
Our own tax dollars going to try and cut us.
Yes.
I'll just add that I think it's probably just the beginning, even if the legislature tries to take the money, that there'll be litigation over whether or not they have the authority to do it, whether or not it's constitutional under the state constitution, whether it violates Prop 22. All those issues, I think, would be in play in court afterwards if the state goes through with the plan. But it's, what I've heard is it's a plan, it's a plan, and that's the beginning of the discussions in the legislature. So what we see later in the year may not be what is being proposed right now as well. So it's fairly fluid because of these problems.
I was supposed to be positive? There is some silver lining.